Call to order the regularly scheduled meeting in the month of September in Marmell, Arkansas. Today is September the 26th of 2019. Commissioner Neri, welcome back. Do we have any announcements?
No, Mr. Chairman, not this evening, and it is good to be back.
All right, moving on to the approval of the minutes. We did not have a meeting last month, so you have the July meeting minutes in your packet. Does anybody have any comments, additions, revisions?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Minutes are approved. Let's see. I have no comment cards on non-agenda items, so we will move on to open the public hearing, seeing no new business, or no old business, move on to new business. Item number one, request for a variance for Mr. and Mrs. Ekman. Commissioner Neri?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for variance regarding Section 133B, easements in public right-of-way. Though I was not at the subcommittee meeting, as everyone knows, you should have all of those materials from the applicants in front of you. One of the most important items, I think personally, in this whole request is that the original permit for the pool itself was granted in 2001, when no current staff that are in City Hall were actually here then at work. And in my opinion, it was probably a permit that should not have been granted. And those are my comments.
All right, do we... Mr. and Mrs. Ekman here today?
Yes, sir.
Welcome back. If you could say, I presume we may have some questions for you, so if you'll just go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Richard Ekman, 130 Cherokee Drive.
Mr. Ekman, were you able to get in touch with any of the easement holders or figure out what the nature of the easement is on the property?
Yeah, so we couldn't get anything that said 100% if it was a utility easement or not. What we were able to find out, we did get lines marked, there was nothing back there. Mike Hogan came out, looked, he checked, made sure there was nothing back there as well. So as far as anything in the easement, we couldn't find anything at all, no.
Have any other questions or comments from Commissioner?
I have a comment. In this GIS map, it looks like the two lots behind him, behind this encroachment area, looks like they are both in the 100-year. And one of them is a tract, and one of them is, looks like maybe three lots off of Seminole Lane, that I went out there and they're basically in the 100-year also.
Your front of the tracks immediately to the rear?
Off of Seminole Lane, yeah, to the rear of that property line. You can see Lot 32, and then there's an open space, Track A, that... I doubt if there's anything ever built there.
I've been there myself, I don't recall Lot 32. Do you know if there's anything built on Lot 32? I don't believe so.
No, I think it's empty.
Any other questions, questions or comments?
Did anybody talk to Mike Hogan?
I did.
Yes, I did. And Mr. Hogan, and I understand why, is willing to give up a portion of that easement, not completely all of it. And he also stated that we have no drainage structures in that area now, and though it's not labeled, given the area that it's in, and you should never assume anything, but I think it's a pretty good assumption that that was probably intended to be a drainage and/or utility easement from the placement of it. I was talking to Mr. Ekman earlier, and you're talking about getting letters from CenterPoint, Energy, Central Arkansas Water, North Little Rock Wastewater, the telephone folks, Mike Hogan himself, and maybe not quite as important, Fidelity Cable people. And if you got all of that, you could plat that easement off the property. But Mr. Ekman doesn't have all of that, not now anyway, and he will never get all of it from Mr. Hogan. So, and again, this is only my opinion, probably the most important thing for you and the new owner is this variance request this evening, as opposed to the actual replating of the property.
Correct.
Question. The request for variance, if it goes with the property, not with the owner?
Is that, I guess that's to me.
Yes, ma'am.
(laughing) Sorry. I was just making sure you weren't asking, Mr. Neri. So the variance would be for the use of the property, that normally we wouldn't allow the structure, and the variance would allow the structures in the property. And again, the city in granting a variance doesn't bind the utility companies that also may have rights to that easement. I reviewed just online the plat for the area, and it indicated in the notes that it was a utility and drainage easement. So I will say, we can't bind the utilities, and the variance doesn't bind the utilities, but it sounds like, from your research, that's not going to be an issue.
It would be just the opposite of a conditional use. Where it goes with the business, this will go with the property.
And again, Ms. Krebs, to confirm my understanding, this goes for this specific use on the off chance that the pool was ripped out and they wanted to put something else there, that would require another variance, correct?
That's, I would agree with that.
So is the variance needs to be specific to the existing structures?
I believe that is the case. I mean, that was my understanding of the request. The currently existing structures.
Commissioner Johnson, are you asking if we need to make our variance on the record?
I think it should be conditioned, that we don't, I mean, if the fence is well advanced, that goes all the way across the easement. And I understand what he's trying to accomplish, and I appreciate that, but, and we're not, he was, now, at this point in time, our process of getting a fence permit is quite different than what it was, or perhaps when this facility was built. I don't know when the fence was built, who knows? You were there, you bought the property, the fence was there when you purchased the property? Exactly. Yeah, that was 12, 13 years ago. Sure. Is there, if we condition the variance for just the existing structures that are there, nothing else can be built in it, we can't replat it, we don't have, we can...
That's correct. That's correct.
Yeah, so, you know, Mr. Hogan, we can't give him 10-foot, or replat to 10-foot, it's exactly what it is.
We've had that conversation.
Okay. So I'd make a motion that we amend the request, I guess if it'd be okay, it's just to the existing structures that are in the easement. So there's, if somebody else, if the property owner, so the property owner understands that's going to be purchasing it, is that there won't be any more construction in the plat at easement.
Second.
And that includes if the fence becomes in disrepair, that the fence be constructed, you know, if he ends up being the construct, he's over the property line, it appears, as well, too, that he would need to rectify that at that point in time. There is no, he can construct the fence in the easement, there's no restriction on that, but it's outside, it appears to be outside the property line, a portion of it is.
Well, procedurally, I hear a motion to amend the agenda item to limit the easement to the structures existing in the easement, and I believe I have a second from Mr. Fisher.
Correct.
Do we have any discussion on the motion to amend? All right, this is just a motion to amend, not necessarily to approve or disapprove, but all those in favor of Commissioner Johnson amendment, say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. All right, amended as stated by Commissioner Johnson. Do we have any other questions or comments on this agenda item?
Now, do we need to make a...
Motion to approve the amended request as presented for the variance regarding Section 7133B for the easements in public right-of-way for the applicant, Richard and Brandy Ekman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this agenda item? All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
variance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ekman. Move on to item number two, the proposed preliminary plat for the Benson Park addition. Mr. Neri, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a just over 14,000 square foot development off Country Club Parkway, and I apologize to you for doing a very late second staff review, but doctor's appointments and pain issues would not allow that last week. So, if you didn't get a chance to check your email late in the day, these were sent out, but I believe Mrs. Acock actually laid the second staff review at your places. So after a second staff review on the preliminary plat, which stays with you, the commission, this does not move on to the City Council, the comments that remain are number five and number nine, which deal with the city engineer and meet all of his requirements. You should have also had two emails from Mr. Ramon earlier in the week stating that whatever issues that he may have can be worked out in the construction phase, staff will recommend for a contention approval.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. I have a public comment card from, I believe, a Pat Landis. Please approach. And I realize I've just stated your name, but if you can, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Pat Landis, I live at 202 Nemours Cove, which is in Country Club of Arkansas, and I'd like to submit my comments in writing. Do I, you can, I have a copy for everybody? So the comments that I have in front of you are for all of the items except commercial design, and so would it be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, that I just talk about the one for the plat then at this point?
Let's just go into your mall, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. So Section 94-449 of your ordinance, and by the way, I think your development code, your land use codes are some of the best I've ever seen, and I want to also express my appreciation that Director Neri made arrangements for staff to meet with me and give me information. So that section is for development standards, conditions, and review guidelines, and I'd like to point your attention to the one that says, "The primary emphasis shall be placed upon achieving compatibility between the proposed development and surrounding area so as to preserve and enhance the neighborhood." And that's why this community is so attractive, it's because of the neighborhoods. So the changes I'd like for you to discuss and consider reviewing. The first one is to eliminate the access point onto Country Club Parkway, which would be for both the development plan and the plating, utilizing the existing street currently developed and identified on the plans as Country Club Circle. The elimination of this proposed access point would be consistent with the current development pattern for the PRD district on Country Club Parkway. At this time, the Parkway has access limited only from public and private streets, and only from the side and rear. If you take this limited access with development fronting on it, having to come in from another place, and you combine that with the landscaping and the lit boulevard strip, it creates a development pattern that's not only aesthetically pleasing, but more importantly, has positive impact on traffic flow by reducing the number of locations of possible conflict and traffic interruption. Allowing an access point that's not located within a private or public street is not harmonious and deviates from the existing development pattern. If you look at the whole PRD district along Country Club Parkway, there was only one place where it's a direct access from a lot, and that was for a single-family home. Secondly, I'd like for you to look at the buffer zone between the proposed commercial development and the existing residential development to the north and east, to make sure that those residential properties are not negatively impacted, particularly for noise. In the area proposed for vehicular parking and traffic, there's only a 14-foot buffer strip. And then if you look at the dumpster, it's only 10 feet away from the property line, and that's not really a sufficient distance if you think about early morning pickups of trash, you know, I don't think anybody wants to hear that noise behind them. And then the last item is just a question on this. I didn't see anything about the sign, other than the location, and I'm interested in what are the sign characteristics as far as the height, dimension, the design, et cetera. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of the commission, and want to thank the staff again. You have any questions for anything I presented to you, please?
Any questions, Commissioner, to Ms. Landis?
And I think for the issue for the plat, the main issue is access. And I don't know if that street that exists there is private or public, the street signs all are the same, but again, it's going to certainly change the development pattern in our neighborhood if that access point is allowed. Thank you.
Moving back to the preliminary plat, do we have an owner's representative here with us today?
I represent Paul Benson, who's the owner who bought the land. My name is Keith Miller, I'm an architect, I've been an architect for 45 years.
State your address for the record, please.
Yeah, number 13 Barber, River Run. You want me to, what, talk and...
If you have any initial comments, you can take those, or we can just do it Q and A, guys?
Well, I mean, my initial comments are, this was, I proceeded after Paul bought the land, he knew my history with Marmell. I was one of the founding people that created Marmell. I've been in business for 50 years. I've done several buildings here. The community center, which has now been renovated several times, it actually won a HUD award for New Towns. I was involved in New Town Marmell when it was called New Town Marmell. There's virtually nothing that I didn't be involved in. For 10 years, I worked on this every week. I was the head of the Architectural Design and Review Board for Jess Odom, and I did my part. I love Marmell, I would do nothing to hurt Marmell. And I've been in many meetings like this, because I've done development work all over the country. Let me just address the parking issue first. Our most busy and congested parking area, as we know, is Walmart, I mean, is Kroger and Walgreens, and the box stuff along the freeway, I mean, our Marmell Boulevard. 825 cars over there go through four access points. We've got 53 cars here, and we're trying to take them out of two access points. Now, if you go over there, there are times when the Country Club is quite busy, when they have events, the parking lot will be almost completely full, and after event, they all want to come out that road. Our intent is to have that road, which is, I think, as far as Holloway is concerned, is a proper position to feed our 50-plus parking lot, and keep in mind, this is a mixed use. We've designated this project, it'll be your first mixed-use project, it's designated as what it is. How much is going to be office, it can't be changed, and how much is going to be retail. The office on the back is going to be a single standing building that is all office. And about 45%, which we could show you on the elevations, is already pre-designed internally to be office space, to look across at the freeway, I mean, at the fairway. So if we took that road out, that would actually help my owner, he could use it for more rental space, but we don't really feel like our only way in and out should just be off the existing road that goes up to the Country Club. That's why that's there. It was mentioned that there's no other roads that empty out onto Parkway. Well, I think we've got the bank down the corner, when you come up, there's a shopping center, or a little, I guess, I'd say, retail. So we've already got a pattern of people coming out, we've got burgers coming out on it. We're quite a ways from any of that, and this one single road allows us to come in in a way that really protects the neighbors from what would have normally been a strip shopping center. What I wanted to do here was make sure that our little facility, and it's small, would relate to the Country Club in its design, and also would bring people into our project, and they would go in where most of their activity was, into the side that's internal, not the backside. We could have chosen another way, but I wouldn't want to do it, because I live here. I didn't want that to be a strip center facing the street. I didn't want to come and go here. I wanted something that would be residential, in scale, and that the people would flow into it, it would feel like a nice little community. It fits on the ground. We haven't excavated straight back and have a wall back in the back, like you see on Highway 10. Now, as far as where the, I'd allow Holloway to address where the dumpster is, we can certainly move the dumpster, but we got to think, what, 40 feet of clearance between our buildings and the bumper lawn? So 40 feet on the backside is going to be heavily planted. This is going to be the first one of these things that you've done, and I've done a lot of these, and I feel like you're going to be very happy with this. I showed your color pictures to the people before, but those were basically being... I just want to give these to the ladies.
We can move this thing along a little bit, and just, since we're dealing with preliminary plat right now, let's go to Commissioner questions and comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Todd, yes?
Question to staff, I haven't seen anything from the fire department.
Well, yes, while Chief Payne was in a dental chair this afternoon, he sent me a text that said he has reviewed both of these developments, asked for an additional fire hydrant, and the Holloway firm, obviously, will acquiesce to that, and in his words, he sees no reason for these two developments not to move forward from the fire department's point of view.
Thank you, Commissioner Neri.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question of the architect, just to have a little bit better clarification, if you would, sir. You just mentioned there's a 40-foot buffer between the residence.
Isn't that right?
That's what we provided, the residential one.
Doesn't look like that to me, can you help me out and show me where that is?
25 feet of that can be a parking area.
It's a building. Okay, all right, all right, that...
That's to the building, correct, Mr. Redder?
That's right. That's exactly right. Mark Redder with Holloway Engineering. I just wanted to clarify a couple things.
To the building, yeah.
The access point is a right-in, right-out, so it's not a conflict, a point of conflict. And I apologize, we didn't note that very well on there. And when I talked to her yesterday, we suggested that we wouldn't care if the dumpster hours of pickup were limited, we've done that before here with these things. So if you guys feel like that might be something that you want to add to the approval process, we'd be open to that.
Are you thinking Monday through Friday after 8:00 a.m., before 5:00 p.m.?
Right, something like that. That's something that would be agreeable. The sign, obviously, that would be within the Marmell sign ordinance, so it's...
Permitting Department.
Going to be a monument sign, yeah.
If there's a variance request, it goes to the Board of Sign Appeals, which is the City Council.
Exactly, yes. That's all I have.
I do have one more question while you're up here.
Sure.
Between the detention pond and the building, there's a designation there that says access drive?
Yeah, and that is...
What is that?
Just for loading purposes, and that would totally be after hours, or that kind of thing.
Be for loading?
Yeah, inventory-type things.
The way the building looks, it looks like also you've got access to storefronts on that side also.
Well, I don't know, I'd have to ask Keith about that, but I actually don't believe that the direct access from the public will be that side. It's the backside.
Your intent is to take delivery to that side?
Yes.
And not non-vehicular traffic?
That's right.
Or patron?
What is that?
Mark, is, from a timing, are you, is your developer intending on improving for the, what is the access drive, or what... Are you going to improve that drive and provide that as a part of this development? Or are you going to only develop the shared access easement?
We would only develop the shared access, the existing asphalt that's in the existing parking lot would remain as is, we'll tie into it, obviously, but there isn't...
So it would be functional use?
Yes.
So vehicular traffic can come out Country Club Circle, as well as out the new entrance?
Exactly.
So I've got to ask a couple of questions, sir. This access drive that is, exists in the, I don't know, can we just address the preliminary plat, maybe we just need to go in order, right, these are more development plan comments, per se? So I don't know necessarily if the preliminary development plan addresses, it even addresses access, that's, I think that's the development plan, too, as well.
That's correct.
Correct.
So we can get on with the preliminary plat, and then we can address some of these other questions, Mr. Chair, if you'd like, rather than mix and match.
Sounds good. Any further questions or comments on the preliminary plat?
Sorry, I meant to mention this other, Mark. The story behind this water line that's cutting across your lot, existing easement, maybe?
There is not, well, I don't know. I mean, it's over the future lot, I don't know if that was placed in an easement at the time, I think that it must have been, but things were done a little bit more...
Very unusual for us to plat a piece of property with utility without an easement.
Right, right.
I would recommend against it.
And there again, we'll provide an easement on the plat at that time, when we replat it.
Yeah, for final?
Yes.
So you're reluctant and showing, if Lot 2 goes, you're going to probably relocate?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Do we typically show that on preliminary plat, the designated easement? I've seen it.
Typically, yes, typically.
But it doesn't exist?
That, in my investigation, I couldn't find it. We know there's a water line there.
Sure. Same thing with, you know, it runs both east, west, north, south.
Yes.
It's just...
There have been instances where it hasn't been shown, very similar to this one.
Yeah, we wouldn't final plat that without an easement, anyway.
No, because that's on the punch list.
Right. We can let it go. If it doesn't exist, maybe it's better that we don't...
Agreed.
...address it, because then that would have inference that it is there, and that's not the case.
Let's just say that CAW runs a little bit tighter ship than mono-water used to.
Did they comment on the preliminary plat?
No.
Regarding the location of the line?
No, sir. No.
I don't have any further comment on preliminary plat, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Further questions or comments? Anyone have a motion?
Motion to approve the proposed preliminary plat for Benson Park Addition for Benson Restoration LLC as the applicant, pending any other comments from Commissioners or staff.
And, excuse me, Commissioner Johnson, contention upon satisfaction of city engineer comments.
Contention of Fire Department, that's staff, too, with city engineer comment.
And the Fire Department.
And the Fire Department, and anybody else.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, we'll move on to the item number three, the preliminary development plan. Commissioner, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was able to get in a second staff review on this as well, and looking back to September the 11th, which would have been right about the time of the subcommittee meeting. There were some issues involving labeling of Building B easements along the west line, screening on the east property line, and of course, satisfaction of any city engineer comments. Almost all of those now have been addressed. I was able to see that today, with the exception of, and this, of course, is not unusual at this phase, satisfaction of all city engineering comments, which usually come in the construction phase. And of course, remember, no one gets building permits, no, no one gets a final plat signed until Mr. Aman is happy. So staff would recommend for a contingent approval. I'm sorry. Staff would recommend, are we talking about the plat or the development plan? Staff would recommend for a due-pass recommendation to the Mall Mel City Council.
Commissioner, any questions or comments to staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Back to my question here, Mark, is the, the access drive that is currently there, that is now platted through Lot Two, that would need to be a shared access easement?
It absolutely would.
And it needs to be denoted as such?
Yes, that's right.
I don't know which way that was, so anyway, that's kind of a, I know it's preliminary plat, not that big a deal, but it needs to be denoted that that's the case all the way across.
That's right.
I'm actually asking Commissioner Johnson for that to be put in writing by the affected property owners.
Okay.
That's right, that'll be demanded by Mr. Jenkins of the country club.
I see. Is there any intended cross-access agreement intended for the use of Lot Two on overflow with the country club?
Well, there, there were several discussions about shared parking, because initially, we thought that we might not have enough parking for whatever develops on Lot Two, and they're open to that also. So yes, there's, there's cooperation both ways with this developer and with the country club.
It may be construed as a conditional use.
I, I don't know about that. That's for Lot Two.
Mr. Neri can make those decisions?
Yeah.
I appreciate your confidence in me, Commissioner Johnson, but actually, this blue book will make the decision, so...
Further questions or comments? Anyone have a motion?
The only, the comment I have regarding the, the public entities, or the, the, I'm sorry, Ms., Ms. Landis, is that how you pronounce your name? This is, we're not going to go that, we can go all the way down, and we have the ballparks, and we have a lot of cuts in, that's not specific for multiple, multiple more use. I don't know if that would be fair for this applicant tonight, and, and as far as the designation of the, uh, of the roadway permits it. We're not in a situation like we are along Odom for the classification of the street. I don't know, we may be restricting, my, my concern would be if we don't permit the applicant to move forward with it, we may be restricting use that's maybe an uphill battle if he decides to, to challenge us on that, because there's, there is designated use of, of a access on, onto the, onto the parkway at several locations, if I remember right, although I'm not driven down there in a while, but I believe it's several locations.
And I believe we recently approved one for the assisted living facility.
Yes, we did.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the proposed preliminary development plan.
Due pass recommendation.
Recommendation, thank you, Commissioner, due pass recommendation for the preliminary development plan for Benson Park Addition, with Benson Restoration LLC as applicant.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. We have a due pass recommendation, moving on to the landscape plan, item number four. Mr. Neri, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This does stay with the commission. After a second staff review, and a good job was done here, staff would recommend approval is resubmitted.
Any questions or comments of staff or the applicants?
Mr. Chairman, I do have staff. Mr. Neri, I guess, since we're doing a lot of drip irrigation, there's not as many spray radii on the islands and whatnot now, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so is that something that maybe we need to address, or in our ordinances, or not?
Well, it's addressed, I mean, you can draw some circles on there, you know, if, if you want to, but in, in reviewing what was done before me, it's not a comment. But we can certainly ask them to do that.
No, no, I, I, I just was wondering about our ordinance, I have drip irrigation in my home, and it's not circles.
That's, that's typically what you show on irrigation plan, is circles. To show the radii, because that's what we ask for.
Right. Thank you, that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Further questions or comments? Here are none, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the proposed landscape plan for Benson Park Addition, pending any staff, commissioners' comments.
One second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. It's approved. Moving on to the commercial building design for Benson Park, item number five. Staff comments, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I was able to get in a second review on this one as well. Good job done, staff recommends approval is resubmitted.
Do we have any, questions or comments for staff or the applicant?
This is where I was looking at it for a minute, it looked like there is public access from the backside or the side that faces country club parkway. Am I reading that wrong? Sir, if you will.
Code requires that we have access, access out of the office part. So, you know, those people, in case of a fire, have to have a way to get out of those offices in two different directions. So if you, if you look at the back of the office part, you'll see a lot of glass, some balconies, and doors going out, those are secondary exits. And the way the code reads, you can't just have them come out onto an exit, they actually get down, and it goes, that's, that goes all the way out. We also felt like that drive would be, it's going to be a landscape drive, we're even contemplating maybe using that material that allows it to be grafted, but paved at the same time. You've seen that material?
Yeah.
If nothing else, it would be the permeable concrete that we used, that he used up in my central medical facility in Conway.
When you talk about entrances and exits, I assume that you talk about code, are you referring to the fire code?
No, I mean to your international building code.
But not the, the building code?
Right, right. And, and also, I think that would be great to have back there for fire. You know, we're going to have two fire hydrants, but at the same time, you know, getting back there quickly with a hose from a combination pumper, that allows that to be pretty smooth back there. Now, the, the idea is, if you would envision that, is it'll be, if we, if we can pull it off with our cost, it'll, it won't be like a hard paved. It'll be more like, like I was talking about, like grass with cement paver stuck down in it, okay? So you can get back there for some partial deliveries in the front half, which is closest to our access from the, from the road. And then the rest, there will be no parking back there. But it allows for a lot of things that would be something that you would want to maybe have if you were in that office back there, okay? Like taking furniture in and out for an office, instead of having to come around and park something in the front and interfere with the other office spaces. Because when you look at the plan of that office space, it's got a center hallway down the middle of it, going this way. It's got office spaces at front, onto the, the front of the building, which we're calling front, which is really around back. And then the other offices, which can really be nice, they, they look out off, and actually, the way the site's set up, they'll kind of look above the traffic and over to the, over to the, the green space. So it does two things, it makes the building look nice from that side, looking at it. At the same time, you've got to have an exit out of those offices, and the only way to get an exit out, if they don't go into the corridor, is using the doors that come out onto the backaisers. So it makes sense to us to have that there.
Well, it look, it looks nice from that side, because if I lived in a house across the street, if I was looking at the backside of a commercial building, I wouldn't be happy at all.
Tell me, that's, that was my fight on this all along, was to not have you look at a front of something with cars flat and not look at the back. So the first time everybody involved saw it, I said, you got a building right back. I said, that's what I've been trying to do, and that's what we do have.
And that's why I assumed that that was going to be also public entrance that could go that way too, if they wanted to be walking down the sidewalk and enter back that way.
When you say public egress and access to it, they can, because they can come up those stairs and just go straight on down there.
I think Mr. Fisher's comment is related to, is it going to be designed such that perhaps, you know, the storefront, they're going to, you know, a tenant would put their storefront on that backside to encourage patrons to walk around the building and enter that way primarily?
Well, it's all going to be office on that one end. Now, now, as far as the signs, we, we look to have one sign on that metal module that's on the building. Nobody, I have not designed any freestanding signs, we only want that. If you look carefully at the drawings, there's a sign embedded in that stone wall that just says our name. And on the front of the building, which I call the front towards the road, there's a nice sign embedded in that sandstone, that's it. We don't necessarily think we're going to need a sign. We think it's a building that's going to identify itself pretty well. So as far as having a single tenant that's going to need a sign, we're not going to need that. We don't have a big box tenant in any of this.
Okay, so you're not going to allow it?
We don't want it. We don't want it, my owner doesn't want it.
Back to the access road, it's going to have a capability of supporting a heavy vehicle, right?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Has the fire chief been made aware of the, I guess, intent or desire to use grasscrete permeable pavements and whatnot?
Have you talked to him?
I have, and, and...
Kent, Mark.
Depending on that, to be a fire access drive.
Right.
And, and he's okay with that not being, he had a, he had us add a hydrant at the right side of the entrance, the right end entrance.
Of course, with it only being twelve feet wide, it's a little difficult to get something in there.
Right, it wouldn't apply anyhow, it'd have to be twenty feet to be a fire access drive.
Well, and, you know, you're talking about deliveries of things of this nature, you know, drive up, you go back out.
That's right.
That's right, and that's very limited.
Yeah.
Further questions or comments?
We'll be back here, we'll have to ask questions.
Come to the podium.
For, for future reference, we'd ask you to submit a public comment card, but come on, we'll, we'll allow it.
I'm Kathy Jones, I live at 328 Country Club Parkway. I was confused, pardon me, by your technical language. Do I understand you all to say that the back of a building will face Country Club Parkway?
But the building has two fronts.
clears you right up for you, doesn't it?
No, I understand, that, that's why I was asking. So as I'm driving down Country Club Parkway, and I look to my right, I'm going to be looking at the rear of the building.
Which kind of looks like storefronts.
It's okay, I...
Doesn't look like a back...
It doesn't look like...
Not in what is being designed and drawn.
Okay.
All the, all the small stores, to bring delivery into the front store, you've got...
Keith, you're on the microphone.
I mean, if you're, if any of this is going to be unregulated, I'll have to have you at the front.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'd like to get over to the fourth.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Do you have the back elevation?
I did not have it.
Okay. Okay, well, the back elevation actually pretty much front.
Can you please speak it, speak into the microphone?
He's hard of hearing.
I'm not hard of hearing, it's just the way it's set up. That's the image you see from the park side. The other side has the same roof form, same materials, and down on one half of the building, which is down closer to the subdivision, that's going to be offices that look out on that fairway, and they're above the road, so they'll look over the cars. Anybody can walk to that side, you'll know that it comes up. So, oh, okay, there we are. Is that the back, is that the back?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, well, so, let's have a see it. So, you know, the, the idea was not to have exactly what we don't want.
I think we've got it, any further commissioner questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the proposed, proposed commercial building design, Benson Park Addition, subject to staff, any commissioner comments?
Second.
Motion and two seconds, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, now moving on to item number six, moving on to the Albright Commercial Preliminary Development Plan. Mr. Neri, staff comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I actually did a second staff review on this. You didn't see it, because I wanted a complete second review on everything, which I see Mr. Jess from the Holloway firm just provided me right this second. But I was able to see it earlier in the day. So on the development plan, the comments that existed on September the 11th have been satisfied, with the exception normally, or obviously, of satisfaction of any engineering comments from Mr. Aman, so staff is going to recommend for a contingent due pass recommendation to the Mall Mel City Council.
Do we have any questions or comments to staff or the applicant representative?
Mr. Chairman, I do have staff. Did I understand you earlier, and you said that the fire chief has looked at this development and sees no reason to have any issues with it?
That was his text to me today, and yes, I, I verified that he actually has looked at the plans. He actually remembered you dropping these off. I think he might have been under a little anesthesia, or coming out of it about the time he was texting me, so, but, but he did remember that.
Okay, and then also, during our subcommittee meeting, we noticed that on the west side of this parking lot, there was no fence between the residential property and the property line. Is that...
The buffer is there. After a redo of about two or three times, the Holloway firm ran out of time. However, I spoke with Mr. Eric Holloway today, and I also spoke with Madam City Attorney concerning this. And though there is an existing six-foot-high privacy fence there now, that is not owned by the people that own this property for the Albright Commercial or Fontainebleau Development, whichever they decide to call it. And though it may seem like overkill, who's to say that, as Madam City Attorney put it, that that fence might not come down someday? And we would have no recourse to say, put that back up. So that will be a comment, is to put, show the fence on the development plan. I can cite a reference to where this commission has actually allowed that. That was a formal variance request, and that would be Parkway Square, where you had the buffer, and you had the six-foot-high privacy fence owned by the residents behind them. Well, no such variance request was made, obviously because this is a fifteen-day lead time coming out of Chapter 94, and they didn't have time. Mr. Holloway said that they will show it, it will not go to the city council unless they do.
Okay, and Parkway Development, I think that buffer turned out to be a non-clearing buffer.
But it was in keeping with that same section that was quoted earlier out of Chapter 70. If commercial property or property being used for commercial purposes abuts residentially zoned property or property being used for residential purposes, it's a 40-foot buffer, 25 feet of which don't really have to be a buffer, could be parking, which leaves you with a 15% buffer that you aren't supposed to do anything in unless it's absolutely necessary for whatever reason, vermin, diseased plants or trees, what have you, and the six-foot-high privacy fence.
And did I also hear you say that Mazan said that, uh, the city engineers' comments could be handled in?
In the construction phases, they always are.
Further commissioner questions or comments of staff or the applicant?
Mr. Neri?
Sir?
So we have a conditional use that comes through in your evaluating, so there is a designated, uh, just like the previous applicant, retail versus commercial, or whatever the functional use is. So is there latitude within the, within that, uh, building as long as they're covering that use? So if they wanted to come in, for example, just to, if they wanted, uh, 7,000 feet of square for the restaurant, that, that would have to come back?
Wouldn't be allowed.
Right. Wouldn't be allowed.
If they exceed that.
But within that bin, building envelope, you know, they're designated the area to be retail, they're designating there to be restaurant. Do they have flexibility within that area?
They have the flexibility to meet this code. That's the only flexibility they have. Unless they wanna go back through the whole process, if it's read by the city council, then me or you as a commission don't have the authority to change that. Then you have to go back through the entirety of the process and then back to the city council.
So would they be, uh, stuck, without a better term, designated to have the restaurant on the east side of the property then as currently? Like, they, or they can move it to the west?
They can move it.
Thank you.
All right, and I got a bit ahead of myself. Commissioner Todd brought to my attention this Landis comment card applied to, uh, these items as well, so, uh, again, name and address for.
Yes, my name is Pat Landis. I live at 202 Nemours Cove. So in the interest of time, I'm gonna skip a few things I said, which were the same things I said on the other one. But I wanna remind you, I think compatibility with newly approved development with the neighborhood is pretty important. Uh, I still don't think those access points should be there. I wanna correct some information that you heard that was erroneous before. On this Parkway, the area of the zone, PRD, anyone who built or developed there was forced to use side streets for access or rear access, with the exception of one home. And that's the whole strip of PRD to get down to the very end where there's these park uses, and I couldn't tell if those were driveways or private streets. So this is a change. It changes the character of our neighborhood. So, number two. When you look at the buffer zone on this, and I think it's important to do that, there's two big issues with the buffer zone. One is you have a drive-through use. So you have cars going to the west, and particularly like in the cold weather, you're gonna be late in the day, you're gonna have your lights on. Those lights are gonna be shining into those neighbors' backyard. You're going to have lights also from the drive-through window for what appears to be a restaurant. It could be something else. You're gonna have the noise of the traffic. The landscaping is there, but there isn't a fence to stop those lights. And again, the dumpster is 18 feet from somebody's property line. I don't want, we said this before, someone looking and taking a dumpster and emptying it early in the morning. Number three is pretty important to me. Um, I occasionally am required to use a cane and have to use a handicap parking space. On this, I would like for you to change the accessible parking spaces to comply with the federal regulations for location. And if you look up the code for the Department of Justice, it says accessible parking spaces must be located on the shortest accessible route of travel to an accessible facility entrance. Where buildings have multiple accessible entrances with adjacent parking, the accessible parking spaces must be dispersed and located closest to the access, sorry, accessible entrances. So on this site plan, you have all the parking places against the property line. A physically challenged person, after they get out of the car, is gonna have to cross the lane of traffic. And then they're gonna have to walk to whatever store they wants to. And somebody else can interpret what the Department of Justice says about this. But basically, they said these spaces have to be close to the entrances. Skip sign approval. And then the last item is, I saw that there was a proposed restaurant, had two outdoor areas. But this is, by the way, this is close. I can walk to this. I thought this is pretty cool. But what's, isn't pretty cool is that typically outside restaurants on the deck or in the patio have music. Sometimes it's live music. And it might be really nice when you're going out for an evening, but when you're home and you have one of those few days in this part of the country that we can open our windows, I don't wanna hear that music. So it's possible to put a condition on to either limit the decibel level at the property line, if you can test that, and if you can't do that, to limit the hours of operation. So again, I'd certainly hope you look at the access point again. Uh, protect the neighbors to the west from noise and lights. Comply for accessible parking. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Putting this in writing as well.
Yes.
Further questions or comments from the commission?
Yes, I have one of the applicant's representative.
Name and address, please?
Jess Griffin, work for Holloway. You gonna give their address or my home address?
Their address, 200 Casey Drive.
200 Casey Drive.
What about the, uh, handicap parking spaces? Can you move them?
I believe one of the issues, it's actually a sloped site, and that front area does slope quite a bit. And with that, we put it in an area where we could get, meet the ADA code and the percentage of slopes on the site, basically.
So the front, the front side here has a grade break from left to right, and then you have the storefront, which is all one finished floor, correct?
Yes.
That's finished floor carries over to, uh, space seven. So you, those are one, two, three, four, so. So you can fit those on the east side of, on the east side there and, and, or adjacent to, uh, seven and meet the ADA requirement and get them on the front?
Yeah, we might, uh, look at maybe getting some of the handicap spaces on the opposite side of the building. That might be helpful. So they get access on each side of the building.
I mean, as far as crossing lanes of traffic, ADA does that all the time. Walmart, there's not a Walmart constructed, they don't construct the front businesses, not. Circle or move into the traffic in front of Walmart, the ADA.
Kroger's the same way.
Yeah, Kroger's the same way, so. If it can be accommodated, it's accommodate request. I, I just don't know unless, you know, you have to evaluate that.
Further questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain the motion.
I make a motion to approve the proposed preliminary plat- or development plan for Al- do pass, excuse me, for Albright Commercial. Pending any commissioner comments or staff?
Again.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, one other follow-up question I forgot to ask.
Sure.
This parking access, this, this rotor access into Country Club, I, I assume you're trying to work something out with them that goes to the north?
Uh, you talking about right here?
Yes, sir.
We have a letter from the owner. I didn't bring it. I forgot. In the email, it's from Billy Smith, President, Custom Advertising of Arkansas. And he basically said, "I have no problem with any reciprocal parking or shared parking between the properties." And so that's, in essence, to try to bring the two properties together and share parking amongst each other.
I think that was part of our package, wasn't it?
And there, that parking lot's already basically.
Is that striped?
It's already striped and paved.
Yeah, but so is it striped on the east side of the island? Say that, the drive doesn't seem to line up too well with circulation if I'm envisioning where the stalls would be, which is not drawn on the drawing. You follow?
Right. We had, of course, would have been the striping right there up to the north on the, yeah. I don't think the striping was shown, but we could, we'll definitely take care of that.
Spaces.
Yes.
That's what he desires.
Whatever's needed to create the cross-access.
So they're on the east side. Maybe it does line up, Jess. Yeah. I'm looking at the area. Still looks a little off though, now, just I think.
I think part of it is that.
I know you don't have a final design.
He made the, uh, that little area. Appears to be a lot wider right here than it is at the drive, and that's, and there is kind of an offset there, and that, that kinda.
The two ways, two-way traffic there. That's the intent.
I believe there is, it's wide enough for that.
Further questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Going back to the motion on the table, do we have any discussion on the motion to approve? Issue a do-pass recommendation? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Moving on to the proposed landscape plan. Uh, Mr. Neri, staff comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually saw amended copy of this about 4:30 this afternoon. Mr. Griffin didn't get the rest of them here in time to give to you all. However, staff is gonna recommend for approval as resubmitted, because I've seen everything that was listed on the September 11th comments. Those have been addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Uh, do we have any commissioner questions or comments of staff or the applicant?
Uh, I do, Mr. Chairman. Uh, on the legend, I had trouble trying to figure out what the plants were. I didn't see the names on that, on my copy. Is it on the amended copy?
Yeah, probably didn't.
There's a plant table?
Right here at the top. We got Japanese boxwood shrubs. Uh, the densely evergreen is the foster holly. And, uh, we've got a few red maples and purple leaf plum tree, which is right here. The red maples are the native red maples.
Yeah.
Not the.
Not the Japanese.
Japanese.
Yeah.
So the native red or the, uh, ones right here?
Yeah.
These are the purple plum right here.
And, and I seen the list, but I want you to make it easy for me. If you, in your legend, next time if you'll give me a little indicator of who's on first, that would be good.
Right, and I've got the symbols here.
Okay.
But in the construction, I'll add more labels on each plant.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Does anybody have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the proposed landscape plan for Albright Commercial.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Moving on to the commercial building design, item number eight. Mr. Neri, staff comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess you could say I also finished a second staff review at 4:30 this afternoon. Staff would recommend for approval as resubmitted.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Any commissioner comments or questions of staff or the applicant? No questions or comments? Uh, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the proposed commercial building design as resubmitted for Albright Commercial.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes. Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if you please.
Yes, Mr. Neri?
I, I want to include this for the minutes. Obviously, we put up signs for something in PRD so folks could call in and, and comment, like Ms. Landis, for instance. And we always keep track of those at, at the end of the day, and I got some feedback from Mrs. Acock when I was gone, and then I added what I got after the fact. So when all the smoke cleared, you had 14 in favor, and these are for both developments, 12 against. And if you'd like to know what the major comments against were, they were just about verbatim the same. I don't like the idea of added traffic. I don't like the idea of commercial in this area. That's pretty much it.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. We'll now close the public hearing. We'll move on to city council liaison reports. Uh, we have August 5th. Commissioner Ramsey?
Uh, well, I brought the agenda, but I left my notes. So, uh, I'm gonna refer to the video.
We'll refer to the video. Uh, meeting of August 19th, Commissioner Todd.
Yeah, uh, on the 19th, uh, there wasn't that much for the planning commission. Uh, there was a second reading of the small wireless facility deployment. There was the third reading of ordinance 982, uh, which, uh, regu- regarding street signs. That's the one where the, the size of the private street sign, uh, has been increased. And, uh, this was pre Sam Williams' retirement, so there was a, a good turnout at that on 9-3. And that's about all that was there.
Thank you, Commissioner Todd. September the 3rd, Commissioner Johnson, that's you.
Yeah, I think John covered it, didn't he? Yeah, there was no, there was nothing on the 3rd for planning commission activities. Uh, that was the retirement recognition for, uh, former, former police chief, and I think there was announcement, I think the ribbon cutting's November 6th is scheduled. I don't know if that's still planned or not for the third entrance.
I believe that's correct.
Still planned. Madam City Attorney confirms.
Last I've heard.
Moving on to September the 16th, Commissioner Green.
And I was in attendance. I didn't watch the video. But I, I left my notes, uh, on the counter. But I will say this, that there was a first, second, and third reading, uh, on some bond issues and allowing the mayor and the bond company to, uh, go ahead and purchase some bonds. So, uh, that was on, and that took up quite a bit of the time.
They were refinancing.
Refinancing. The refi, they didn't issue any new bonds, I don't think.
No.
Right. Refinancing.
Refinancing, so.
I don't think you were really there.
I was there.
I'm gonna check the video.
The mayor and, and Marion, they'll, they'll vouch for me, so I was there. But anyway, refer to the video.
That don't mean nothing.
I did come out.
Council liaisons for October, uh, October 7th, Commissioner Smith, that's you, and October 21st is Commissioner Fisher. Anybody have anything else?
Make a motion, we adjourn. Again.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
We adjourn.
You gotta be here on Abby's birthday?
Somebody need to carry that, man?
It's money to trade.
I can watch the video.
Yeah, you can. Just get the agenda and say some stuff that was on it. You'll be fine.